Good morning and welcome to a special meeting in the select board on November 2nd, 2023. Item two is discussion approval request to the executive office of housing and livable communities for additional time for compliance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 3. I think this is, sorry? What did I say? I said, I said 3A, 3A, 3A. Yes, thank you. No, no, please, thank you. I think we'll go to Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I've attended a lot of the forums and there are a lot of concerns with the districts and things like that. And I feel that we probably should have done this before. I know that even Mr. Gaias had said that at one point, that, you know, I wish we had more time to really get it right. And I know that the town planner at one point had also said something to the effect of that it's important to get this right and not rush the zoning. So in that frame of thought, I thought about it and I thought, we never really asked for that. And, you know, I think it is something we should consider. We've heard that from many people as well. Thank you.
All right, comments or questions? If you can try to raise your hand, as we're back on the Zoom method here, so raise your hand. Richards?
Good morning. So just, I, it seems now, Mr. Chair, that our article is the planning board doesn't feel they have enough time, given the constraint, to write an article. That, that does concern me because their, their, um, their expertise, and this is way more than mine is, and I, I'm, that's one of the things that I'm uncomfortable with such a major change that we're a political body. We're not, we're not, none of, not one of us here, this is our expertise. And I, I know how much work Cheryl's put into this. I know other members of the planning board have all weighed in this, but they don't feel they would have enough time. One analogy that was presented to me this morning was similar to filing your taxes April 15th. You asked for an extension and that's something that's within the, within the parameters of the law. I do think this is such a major change for our community and the fact that it only impacts some aspects of it and not others. Two things that have come to me, I'm inundated past 24 hours with emails. The two things that come to me are, one question is, there are a lot of people that support the letter that you wrote on behalf of us, appealing the, you know, what category we're in, and I believe where Trisco's working on this as well as Senator Timothy a little bit on the state side. That, and this, this is not a statement about non-compliance, a statement about giving us enough time to do this. Look at, look at, you and I, of the two longest-serving members here, we've gone through five or six major 40Bs where our board responded to all of them with a lot of, and none of them have, other than the Ice House have come to fruition yet. I'm just, I think, two things. My two points are A on appealing your letter, at the same time of perhaps asking for some more time so that we can prepare this right. I mean, it just, that's all, I, that's my, my thought. I'm lingering, so I'm gonna shut up.
No, no, not at all. Mr. Zoll? Oh, you're, you're muted, Ben.
All right, sorry. Working on the computer here. I'm also trying to lower my hand, but we'll get to that. Just, you know, you know, I appreciate what Richard said, and just a couple of quick thoughts. I think, you know, we kind of recognized early on that the, the planning board had thrown up signals that they may not be putting together an article or, or able to put together an article. And I have definitely watched a lot of the planning board discussions, and I appreciate a lot of the thought that's gone into that. I kind of think of our article as what the planning board kind of has, it's really relying on a lot of their work. And so, you know, if, if it's our body that kind of catalyzes that work and puts it together as an article, I think that's our, you know, that's our responsibility. We have a responsibility as a town, as the Boston Globe pointed out recently, as many, many members of, of our, of our community have pointed out at various forums, to follow the law. We have an article. It's not perfect, but again, it's continuing to be refined. And, and I think people have to realize too, that whatever we pass on at town meeting is, you know, going to continue to be subjected to change and revisions. And, you know, we're not etching the 10 commandments here on Mount Sinai and coming down for all time. Like, this is a work in progress. I think we've got a really good article. We had a great hearing turnout at the, at the planning board meeting last, it was the last Thursday. Lots and lots of comments in favor of supporting this work. I think we're at a point now where we, we can, we can keep asking questions where we know that the state's gonna come back and say no, or we can just do the work that we're responsible for doing. So I think it's time that we do that. I think the residents are gonna be able to weigh in on this at town meeting. I expect that we'll hear lots of opinions at town meeting. And like I said, I think we're gonna probably see continued revisions to this. But I, you know, I don't understand why we would keep asking for things that we know, where we know what the answer is going to be. And we've done this a couple of times. We've had plenty of time to deal with this. I don't know if that time's been used as well as it could have been, but here we are in November. Town meeting is in December. We've got the article on the warrant. Let's push forward. I'm not in favor of sending any more letters, asking for more time, or more changes, or more qualifications. We're a town, just like any other town in this, in this state, and we need to do the job that's been set out before us by the legislature three plus years ago. So I'm not in favor of asking for more time. I am in favor of pushing forward and I, I just encourage the body to vote accordingly.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto. Oh, you're muted, Roxanne.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mike. So a couple of comments. One is, I was at a lot of those hearings as well. And, you know, we heard a lot from East Milton, for instance, very concerned with all of the units going up in East Milton, and some of the issues were traffic. That was like a major concern. Um, we already have bad traffic situation in different parts of town, that one in particular. I think we have the opportunity. There's, there's no harm, in my opinion, of asking for more time. Uh, we, we don't have the build-out analysis yet. We don't have really the cost breakdown onto what the cost would be for infrastructure. And I know that with some of the building, you know, these aren't, these might be little incremental changes that go on, for instance. And then what happens is the developer, whoever it is, is not gonna be on the hook for, for that. It's only when we do these bigger projects that we may have them do upgrade sewer and, and things like that, you know, water pipes and whatever. I think that, I hear what you're saying, Ben. I also think we have a, you know, a responsibility to all the residents of the town. And this is one of the biggest zoning changes in all, many, many years. It's very difficult to go back to town meeting, once we approve something, and go back, you know, a year later or six months later and ask for changes or differences to change and alter the zoning that we approve. I think that we, you know, this is a big change. So I think that, you know, you're assuming that we're not gonna get any time, and maybe you're right, maybe you're wrong. But we don't know that. And I think that we do have a responsibility to try to do the best that we can for the town, and that means every resident in this town. And so I think that it makes sense to send a letter. There's no harm in sending a letter because we wanna get it right. And the other thing I would say before I, I yield to somebody else is that these, these guidelines, we could come in and they could change those guidelines the day of town meeting. Uh, the state could come in and change something, or the Friday before. So everything's sort of in flux. And so I think that, you know, we wanna make sure we get it right, and a little more time might help us. I mean, even, like I said, the planning director himself has said that. I know Mr. Gaias has said that many times. So I think that would be, you know, helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Wells and Mr. Zoll?
Um, I, oh, did you, I'm sorry, did I, did you call me?
No, no, I didn't. Yeah, we didn't quite hear that first statement. I wanna make sure we hear you, Richard.
No, you know, Michael, I mean, we've been going to town meeting for many years. I mean, many, many decades. You know how time, I mean, all the questions we're asking here, both, both what Ben said and what Roxanne said, are very much what we might hear at town meeting. And like, what do we say? I could absolutely, yeah, this, the town meeting, I mean, I'm just thinking the recent, look at the ADU, look at how many things have been referred back to committees on. I, I just, I think having time, and, and I, I don't really care what the Boston Globe writes. They write good and bad about us during the business of newspapers. It's usually more bad than good. I, I just think we need to be prepared for town meeting, because this is gonna be the same discussion at town meeting. We are not walking into town meeting, you know this, and you're the chair, so you're the one who's gonna be speaking to this on behalf of us. I think at least having a plan, whether or not we voted now or not, I don't care. But at least having a plan so that we can do that if we have to, because I could see, I just don't see this sailing through town meeting without a lot of questions. I've heard from two of our most senior members who've served this, you know, very, I don't wanna name their names, but, you know, have served and provided insight and skill in more town meetings than I can count. And both of them have serious concerns about this. And it's, it's, it's not, this is, you know, this is not an easy thing. This is hard. And that's why I just think we need to have some type of plan or be prepared to respond to this, because absolutely, someone or many at town meeting may ask, because it's gonna go back and forth. It's gonna be our article, planning board's gonna, I could already vision how this is gonna go. And someone is gonna say, can we send this back for more time? And this is not an act of not compliance. This is just how big an issue this is. And that's why I think for us, we need to have a plan on how we, we have to address that, because I'm sure it's pretty presented to us. You were at the warrant committee the other night. I'm sure you heard that there. I'm like, just, you didn't, you, I'm sure it wasn't smooth sailing. You were in and out of there in 15 minutes. That's a lot, Mr. Chair. See you later. You know that didn't happen like that. So that's just, we have to be prepared for this. So that's, that's just my thought on that. But time is something that could be instrumental to us in this call. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wells and Mr. Zoll.
So we have a deadline that the state has set. We have an article that meets the requirements of the state. Town meeting is the opportunity for folks to weigh in with their opinions about the article. I don't see why, you know, why would this state ever grant us more time? Because every single town in, in the state that's affected by this is gonna ask for the same thing. That's the same with the rezoning requirements. So rather than, and, and there's, you know, a question about damage. We have damaged this town's reputation already by our obstinate, you know, continual pestering to try to get ourselves rezoned. We're gonna damage the state's ability to actually have a housing for folks. So we owe it to the citizens of Milton to put this forward now to town meeting in December. Let them debate and discuss. They have plenty of information. We're never gonna have 100% of the information. We're gonna have to make a decision. We have to recognize that that's the case. Let's go. It's time to make this happen. Put it forward at town meeting. I'm not gonna say anything else or respond to anything else, because I think this discussion is frankly, if it should have happened, it should have happened a year ago. It can't happen now in, in November. We can't keep trying to throw up last-minute roadblocks to what really needs to happen, which is more diverse housing in Milton so that our residents, like seniors, can downsize, new families can move into homes that they can afford. We need this. This is not a bad thing. This is a good thing. Let's make it happen.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you. I think the other thing to remember, though, is that we have a responsibility to the residents to make sure that we understand what the implications of this. Everybody that I've spoken to wants to do some more housing. So that's not the issue. So I think to throw up our hands and say, well, if you're asking for more time, then that means you're trying to be obstinate or whatever, and these other towns have gotten it done. We have a planning department of two. You go look at Brookline, you go look at some of these other towns. These are huge departments that, you know, they've spent, what, $250,000, I think, Brookline, on looking at this? So, you know, if you're gonna compare that to some of these towns that are in the same category with us, it's like apples to oranges in, in terms of their supports. You know, our planning department's doing the best they can. If our own town planner has said, you know, it's important to get it right than to rush zoning, I mean, I think that's a valid concern. Our own member of our planning board, and several, I believe, have said, you know, more time would really help us do it right. So, you know, and, and as far as the Boston Globe article, that Boston Globe has also said something, said something about housing there. Then it, you know, the month prior was talking about the shortage of housing for elders. So, you know, I, I think we have to take everything with a grain of salt when it comes to media in terms of that. I think the most important thing is that we represent the town. If this is zoning, we wanna get it right. Yeah, we're not zoning specialists. We don't have costs. We don't even know what this will look up, because we don't have, you know, the build-out. You know, the, the planning board did their part with trying to hire these consultants. These consultants are like months behind. We can't really help that. And again, I think, you know, following the law, I mean, this keeps getting brought up, that people that, you know, feel differently or breaking the law. And the law says what it says, and we all agree on that, except for the fact that, again, guidelines are not the law. Guidelines are like ideas or steps to achieve compliance. And those steps to achieve compliance that are recommended can change, and they change all the time. So I don't wanna really, that's not really what I wanted to get into, but I think that needs to be mentioned, because this is new, unchatted territory. This is a brand-new law. And we're doing the best we can. But again, a, a department of two to do something for the entire town. And, and I feel like honestly, we've changed these, these areas. At one point, the Elliott Street corridor was in there. Now it's not. I mean, so we've changed things. We've heard from people along Elliott Street that most people would favor that. But again, you know, I think this is sort of, you know, in flux, and I think we could, if we had a little more time, I think we could do a better job at it. And that's our responsibility is to do a better job for the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Just, just before we go to Ms. Bradley, I will, just to clarify, we have been informed by town council that these guidelines have the force of law. So there's no, so, so it's, it's not something that we can, that we can deny, that somehow the guidelines are just a good idea, not a good idea. The guidelines have the force of law. That's what, that's how we've instructed, we've been instructed by town council. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope everyone can hear me. I'm in my car at an orthodontist appointment. I, I just had a quick question. Can you tell me if any other town has been granted an extension of time?
So, oh, sorry. I, I mean, I'm, I'm aware. Yeah, Nick can correct me. I believe Brookline may have asked for more time back in May and didn't receive it. I think that's right. No?
No one received it. I don't know if they actually asked. I, you might know a little bit more than me, but.
Okay. I thought they asked as part of, but maybe they didn't.
I believe at one point they had, but no community in the Rapid Transit group has been granted an extension. Everybody's still subject to the December 31 deadline.
Great. And from what I read in the, in, in the papers, and which I think are reliable sources, it seems like everybody is on track to comply with these guidelines with their town meetings by the end of this year, from what I've read. Have you heard anything different, Mr. Milano or Mr. Zawinski? Sorry, I didn't know you were in there, Tim.
Not that, not to my knowledge. I think that is, that reflects what I have seen as well being reported.
Okay.
We'll move on to a meeting if November, November 14th.
Okay. So, um, so so far, what I'm understanding is we are going to town meeting in a month. No other town within the Rapid Transit has been at, or has been granted an extension, and every other town is on track to meet the deadline. So I guess the only thing I'm gonna say is I've seen the most benign thing come to town meeting. And we have spent, I don't know, six, seven hours on commas, on people wordsmithing from the floor. So in my opinion, we're never gonna bring anything to town meeting that is approved within 15 minutes. I think that that is, is quite the, the feat, and I don't know that even God themselves could, could come down with gold-plated anything and get it passed our town meeting in 15 minutes. So, um, so I think we've, we've heard, we've heard from other members, we've heard from residents. I think I agree with Mrs. Zoll. We've got a month to go. We have to comply with this law. I'm not in favor of asking for any additional time at this point in time. It makes us look ridiculous. It makes us look like, no, 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 let's throw up another Hail Mary so we don't have to comply with this zoning yet so that we can keep trying to tinker it, just like we did with the 40Bs. 40B was passed before I was born. Y'all should have been dealing with this for many, many years before I came to town, and right now it's sitting in our laps, right? This is the same thing that we're trying to do with the zoning here, and it doesn't make any sense to me, honestly. This is a law. We have a deadline. We have to comply. We have had an amazing amount of work done by those two staffers in our town planning department. They have not only drafted according to the guidelines, but they've incorporated many things from the public, many things from the planning board. This is exactly why we put an article forward to the planning board so that they could continue to tweak it, which they have, and they will continue to tweak it. Laws get tweaked right up until the time that they're passed, and even after they're passed, people come back and change the law. This is not a new concept. So I want to applaud Tim and Josh for doing the yeoman's work that they've done in such a short time. But it's time to move on, and it's time to vote, and it's time to bring it to town meeting, and that's all I'm gonna say, because I'm not gonna be one of those towns that in the last 30 seconds of the game calls up and says, no, I wanna, I wanna get the rules changed just for me, just for my town. I don't think that that's right. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. One is, I believe that out of the communities that have this December 31st deadline, that Brookline is the only other considered town. I think the rest are cities, if I'm not mistaken. I'm just curious, how many towns, how many group, how many towns or cities in this grouping actually did ask for a time extension? Again, we have, you know, I applaud the, the fact that, you know, Tim and Josh are working really hard on this. That's true. But again, it's, you know, it's a huge task for them to try to get it right. You know, town council, the one thing that, Mike, I would say is that town council had said that, you know, at the warrant committee, because I'd listened to that one, that, that the guidelines are not legally enforceable, but he did cite that, that, he did cite that there was state, there were two cases. One that was regarding a 40B and one that was a housing authority where the courts did go with the guidance as, you know, the law or whatever. But this is a brand-new issue. So, you know, it looks like they would do that, but you don't know that they would do that, is basically what he said. Um, my other thing, I guess, just a comment I would say is, to everyone who thinks that we have to do the compliance and so forth, I get that. But what happens when, when these regulations, not the regulations, the actual guidelines change again? Does that mean we're out of compliance? Because technically, we're going with what we have, and then they change again. So would we have to alter everything? Because we would be out of compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. And again, just to correct the record, town council has made clear in writing. And I don't know how someone may have interpreted what he said to the warrant committee, but he's made clear in writing that their advice is that these guidelines are enforceable, and that should, that should, and it's, and it's on the face of it in the law. The guideline, the, the agency is, is empowered by the legislature to, to create these guidelines. So I, I mean, that, that, that should be the end of that. Mr. Wells?
Thanks again, Mr. Chu. Let me take a stupid hand. So just look, I'm not gonna belabor here a couple of things. And one, I don't think we've done anything to harm our reputation. I was talking to a senior staffer in one of our neighboring communities yesterday, and someone who's been in the business for a long time, asking like, how they were dealing with it. And the first thing they said to me was, well, we have a lot of land, and they're correct. Like, Tim and Josh know, and they know how I feel about them. We talk regularly, I'm like, always have been, always will be, one of the biggest supporters in the planning department and everything that they do. And I know this is something they asked for. This is something that could drop 30,000 feet and land it in their lap. But let's remember, the one unique thing about this community is we are the largest abutter to the city, which is, you know, trafficism, every day you hear it. And there's this one staffer reminded me yesterday was like part of the reason they have plenty of room and we don't is that when they carved out the town of Milton, the state took 5,500 acres and made it the Blue Hills Reservation, which is, when you drive along 128 and you go Lindsay Braintree, Denham, all the way out, they're, they're all built up. The Autumne, the Socio Plaza, Legacy, all these. And those are easy spots for all of them to, you, and Tim, you can tell me if I'm going wrong here, to utilize the zoning in the slot to their benefit. They have a much bigger parcel of acreage to use than you do, hence the difficulties you've had, some trying to weaken with the district. So I'm okay with us going, I've said this all along, I'm okay with us going to town meeting, but the things that we're talking about today, as I said previously, going to come up, but we need to do. I'm not talking about Hail Mary passes. I'm not talking about non-compliance, but this is a big change for the community. And you gotta let people talk about it. You have to hear them, whether you like it or not. You just have to. That's it. And we, this is just point of, point of honor. Is this something we're voting on today? In honor, is this, we're just having this as a discussion? What are we doing?
Yeah, if, if someone, if someone wants to make a motion, they certainly can. It's on for approval. I would just say, I just wanna, just.
But did we already approve this? I thought we already approved this, didn't we?
No, no, approve, approve a request for a extension.
Okay.
We've, we've approved the art. Um, I just wanna say, with respect to the request, the, the agenda and the request for extension, and, and, and just to kind of debunk this idea that we need more time to get it right, right, and somehow this is rushed, we've been aware of this for the better part of the year, of a year. Our planning department has been working on it for the better part of a year. We have an article, we have an article that's been vetted, and we have an article that has been revised and crafted for months. Um, and so anyone who may have said months ago that we need more time, we've had, we've had time. And we've worked through that, and the planning department has worked through that. And this board certainly has worked through that, and the planning board as well. And so I'm not quite sure what more time would get us, given the amount of work and the amount of time that has been put into this. Um, and just, you know, with respect to, you know, this isn't an IRS extension. There's no provision for this in the law. What this is, is, you know, we've been aware that this project has been due for the better part of the year, and now we're trying to ask the teacher for an extension at the last minute. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's needed. I don't think it's what we wanna do. I don't think it's the kind of example we wanna set. But the most important thing that, that Roxanne raised is the responsibility to the residents. And I think we have a responsibility not to take this article out of the hands of town meeting. It's time for town meeting to weigh in. We have a responsibility to the residents to allow town meeting to, to decide this and to allow town meeting to weigh in. The five of us shouldn't be taking it out of the hands of town meeting by saying, oh, we want more time. This has been vetted through numerous forums and, and public meetings for the better part of a year. It's time for the residents to have a chance to speak, and we should allow the residents to speak through town meeting. And for us to now say at the last minute, oh, we wanna take it away from town meeting, that really. And for us to now say at the last minute, oh, we wanna take it away from town meeting, that really rubs me the wrong way. I think we need to move forward, let town meeting speak, let the residents speak and, um, and see what happens. So, Mr. Wells.
You're muted.
I'm muted.
I did, I just muted. I'm sorry. So look, I, I agree. I, I don't wanna make any, I don't wanna vote anything. And I know that I'm not making everyone happy and I'm not in that, but I do agree. And I said this at a prior meeting. The place for us to have this out is town meeting. Um, and if it turns out, and as I said previously, if it turns out that town meeting thinks that we need to ask for some help, some, and that being the help in the form of more time to get this right, then so be it. I'm willing to live with that, but, um, I know, I say we just let this go forward. I don't think we need to vote. Let's just let it go. Let's get to town meeting and good, bad, or indifferent, let's do the best that we can. And if time and extension at that point becomes something that we need to ask for, I'm fine with that and I would support that. So I, I don't think I need to vote anything today, but I.
Ms. Musta, Ms. Musta.
Thank you. Um, a couple of points. I, I did wanna make a motion to approve a letter and I will explain why. This is not taking it away from town meeting. Um, oftentimes we've had town meeting in February, um, if need be. So if, the problem I have is that to the point of representing the residents and, and so forth, we've heard from different groups that have come to these meetings, like for instance, seven hundred units over in East Milton, uh, big concern. And I think that, um, these districts themselves have been tweaked. I mean, it's even hard to like continually follow what was taken in, what was taken out. There've been a lot of changes and I think Tim would attest to the fact that there have been a lot of changes in these districts. Some that have been stable, but there've been some that have been in flux and changed. And it's a very complicated, um, formula, right, to maintain the, you know, fifteen units per acre and so forth average. So to rush something through for the sake of saying, you know, that we have this. And when I say rush it through, again, we have a small planning department compared to other ones. We don't even have the, the information fully from these consultants, um, as I said. So for, from my perspective, yes, it'll be discussed at town meeting. But I think that there is no harm in sending a letter to see if they would give us a little bit more time to get it right. Because zoning should be as good as it can be for the town and for everybody in this town. So I did wanna make a motion, if anybody will second it, that we send a letter, um, for additional time for compliance.
All right, motion's been made. There a second?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
I don't, I don't like motions being made and not seconded. I, I do not like that. And I don't, and I, and I ask Roxanne. Just as I said previously, I, I, I don't think now's the time to do it. I don't, I think that we're so close to town meeting. I think that's where we're gonna have to make the argument. And, um, I would support at that point, if, if a town meeting gets to and the town meeting thinks that we need to ask for some additional time to tweak this, I would, I would support it at that time. And I'd ask if you just, let's just wait till we get there. Let's, let's get it out on town meeting floor. But, but the planning depart, and I know I'm not making everyone happy here, but I think, I really do believe that's the place where we're going to resolve this one way or the other. So I'd ask maybe if you would consider, I don't wanna see your motion not seconded, if you maybe consider, um, what's the word to use? Reconsider your motion and hold off until town meeting. Did I say that right, Mr. Chair? I'm not sure if.
It's, uh, I would probably be just to withdraw the motion. I think that's.
I'll withdraw it, yeah. Thank you. And I hope you understand Roxanne, why my, what my point to say on this.
Ms. Musta.
Thank you. I, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Wells. I guess the only concern I have with that is, um, we, we have the opportunity to do something now, which is, you know, several weeks before town meeting, we go to town meeting and then it's, you know, it's already gonna be a delayed action if we decide, um, based on town meeting, if, if people wanted to do it then. It's already a month behind really at that point, um, of sending a letter. So I, again, I, 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 I'm trying to understand what the harm would be. I mean, are we afraid that they would give us time or that they wouldn't give us time? I'm just trying to understand that. And if, and if you don't wanna support it, that's fine. That's your right. I just feel that I don't think there's any harm in doing it now because I feel that we would have town meeting and that's in a couple of weeks. If it gets decided at town meeting that delays it another month, really, I just think, uh, there's no harm. But, uh, you know, certainly respect what the other members think.
All right, motion's been made. And, um, absent a second, the motion won't carry. And, um, just, we'll give it a couple of more minutes. Uh, is there a second? All right. So I, I don't see a second. So, so the motion will, uh, the motion won't go forward. Um, all right, uh, item three, uh, discussion approval, uh, discussion update approval special, uh, town meeting warrant articles. Article one, this is subpart three A, article one, the zoning bylaws, zoning map, um, amendment for compliance with MGL chapter forty A, section three A, the multifamily zoning as of right. Uh, and I believe we have some updates we've received, uh, from Mr. Zelinski. Is this Mr.?
Yeah, I can, I can just describe them briefly. If, uh, there are any questions, uh, Tim is here. As Tim laid out in his email to, uh, we did make a change in Elliot's recorder for the floor area ratio. This was in response to some comments that we had heard, um, to have that floor ratio, um, adjusted. In the Mattapan, uh, Station Subdistrict, there's a change in minimum block size in response to a, um, question and comment from Ms. Musto. Um, and also a change in the minimum units per acre, uh, to, again, in that, in that subdistrict. The, um, development goal is, is the Uncoated House Parcel. And sorry, mixed use, um, article is a, uh, we inserted a reference to the, to the bridge, which is shown on the map. It's just a language correction. Um, the other changes that are in, uh, the warrant now are we've inserted a section number, which was missing previously. Um, a section number that would fit it within the new certified zoning bylaw. Uh, there's a correction to the granted offset back to match, um, what we had been using in the compliance models of the maps. And we also inserted language authorizing the town clerk to make clerical revisions to the section numbers and headings. Um, again, with that new certified bylaw, while we've, we've found a place for it. Uh, we do wanna let the town clerk insert it into the zoning bylaw, um, where appropriate and make any adjustments to properly head it and section it, um, if necessary, after approval, um, if there is approval. And, uh, that is, uh, the summary of the changes on, on those two articles.
And then did you have the acreage on the warrant?
Yes, and as Tim just mentioned, we inserted the acreage, which was missing. It's approximately a hundred and fifty-three acres. Um, so that's been updated as well, um, into this warrant article. Nothing, uh, truly substantive, no changes to the districts really. Just, um, um, adjustments to finalize this for town meeting.
All right. So let's, let's, pardon, let's take the, uh, the updates to article one first. Comments or questions on the, on the updates to article one? Mrs. Oh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have no comments or questions about the, uh, the changes, uh, other than my continual thanks, uh, to, to Tim and, and everyone else who's working on these. Um, I think we've, we've had these changes put in front of us. I think, you know, they've, they've consistently been responsive to the, uh, feedback of the town. So given that we just spent forty minutes talking about whether we should delay or not, I, I would just like to move that we approve the changes to the warrant article for zoning bylaw and zoning map amendment for compliance with MGL C forty A, section three A, multifamily zoning as of right in MBTA communities.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Musta. Oh, Roxanne, you're, you're muted.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that we're voting, uh, to put this change in the article. We're not voting the articles. Is that correct?
That's right. We, we voted to, uh, we voted to approve the articles last week, last week to sup, we voted to, we, we've taken both steps on this article and article two. We've taken both steps, which is to put them in the warrant. Again, we voted to support them. Um, and so this is a, an update to the article that would go into the warrant. That's the motion.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Should be a roll call vote. Pardon me, Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Ms. Musta.
No.
Uh, Mr. Zol.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
I think yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. All right. Uh, the next one is the, um, is article two, which is the mandatory mixed use in the, um, mandatory mixed use in the Milton Central Station Subdistrict, which I think Nick, you.
Yeah, it's just the language correction to make sure the language, uh, reflects the math correctly. Um, there might have changed there.
All right. So this will similarly require a motion to update the language in the warrant for article two. Mr. Zol.
So I'd like to make a motion that we update the language for article two in, uh, as, uh, as amended.
Also. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Ms., uh, Mrs. Oh, your hand. Oh, here's it now. Ms. Musta.
Thank you. Just a clarification. So this is to update the language. Did we vote this article as well?
We, we, we did vote both steps on this article. We voted to put it on the warrant and we voted to support it. And this is a vote to update the language, uh, that will be in the warrant.
May I say something?
Yes.
I do like the fact that we're adding some, um, commercial into these art, this article. I really do appreciate that and I do like that a lot. Um, the, the problem I see is that if we, that's what we wanted. I know that this is part of the MBTA, um, allowable use. Um, but we've tied it into that other article, basically, um, into the first article passing. What happens if it does not pass? Then we don't have any commercial, um, because this article would not, I, I assume, be in effect. And I think if we're thinking that we want commercial in that area, it's sort of a shame that we couldn't have just done a separate article. I do understand that this is tied to the MBTA though. So could somebody explain that a little bit to me? How, um, you know, if the first article doesn't pass, then what happens with this one?
Well, they are two separate articles. So, so there'll be separate votes on, on each article. So article two will have a vote and then whether it passes or not, article three will have a, I mean, I'm sorry, article one will have a vote. And then whether or not it passes is article two will have a vote. And, and that can, um, but go ahead, Ms. Musta.
However, it looked like the, um, article two does reference the MBTA in, in that article. I don't know, Nick, can you, can you, um, speak about that or Tim? I mean, I'm just, I guess my thing, my question really is, is it looks like it's sort of tied to that in a way because it's referencing it. If it didn't have the reference in there, I understand, yes. I understand it's a free article. I get that. That's a separate vote. I understand that. But it almost looks like it's with the, with the language that it's tied into that. So.
It, it is. It is. This is mandatory mixed use under the MBTA Communities, MBTA Communities Law. That's right.
Right. But what happens if the first article, let's just say the first article does not pass for some reason? Then does this nullify this article because it's sort of referencing it? That's my question.
If, Mr. Chair, I can.
Yeah.
So I, I think, uh, Ms. Musto, you're correct that there probably wouldn't, um, if, we probably wouldn't seek town meeting to act on article two if article one fails only because it's, it's amending the base article essentially. So any of the references, if article two were to pass, um, like the, the districts described, wouldn't exist if article one didn't pass. Um, and those uses wouldn't need to be changed. Um, so I think, and, and speaking to that point directly, um, they are kind of tied together, um, but in terms of the village and, um, central, you know, commercial uses are allowed there. Um, so under our base zoning, there are, there is opportunities for commercial development in those areas. And Milton Village does have an overly district as well, um, for zoning presently. Um, so these changes are specific to the, to the MBTA piece.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that.
Mr. Wells.
I think Mr. Mr. Milano just answered my question. I was just gonna make point that the, the Milton Village PUD would allow for mixed use either way, whether this passed or not. So, um, the fact that we've taken that previous, that previous action to benefit the town, I think that would help any developer can put mixed use in it, in that area. So that's it. You've answered it for Mike. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musta.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Zol.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Okay. Uh, we have, uh, the other articles listed. I don't believe there are any suggested changes, uh, our updates to those articles. We have approved articles, we have supported articles one through five. Uh, we haven't taken a position on articles six through eight. So, um, at this point, uh, if there's no further discussion or proposals with respect to any of the other articles, we can move to, um, item four, which is, which is approval of the warrant. Anything else on, on item three, which is, which are the articles? Mr. Zol.
Uh, thank you.
I, I'm three or item four?
Yeah, this is on item three. Um, I, I'd like to make a motion that the select board vote to recommend, uh, article six. Since we haven't had an official position on it yet.
Okay, um, recommend article six, which is the, the recording and, um, posting of, um, meetings and public forums. Um, all right. So did you make a, I'm sorry, did you make a motion, Ben?
I did.
Okay, motion has been made to support article six.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any, uh, discussion? Mr. Wells.
Just, you, you said to recommend, I believe Ben meant you, you record this just to go on the warrant. This is a vote to put it on the warrant, correct? Is that what your vote was? Is that what your recommendation was?
But no, Mr. Wells, my, my, uh, vote was to propose that the select board, uh, recommends the passage of the, of the, uh, bylaw and not just, um, not just to put it on the warrant.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Ms. Musta.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I watched some of the discussion on this, um, article that was before the warrant committee. Um, and, uh, I've spoken to town council as well about this article. Um, and I think that there are some kinks that need to be worked out with this article. Uh, I think there are some people that feel that a lot, and we've talked about this, that every committee should be, um, you know, opened up for this. Um, I think the other issue is that we have some sensitive topics that come up and how would we handle them? For instance, uh, at the Board of Health, um, I, I believe Ms. Kinsella, who's health director, had come, um, to the warrant committee and had spoken about that. And I think that we got another letter, I believe, from cemetery trustees at one point. I would prefer that we listen to what happens at town meeting with regards to this article. I think it's premature to take a vote. We, we haven't really had an opportunity to hear from each of these, um, elected boards that were, that are within this. And I totally support transparency. And let's not forget, I was the person on here that pushed to get our packets online. So I am for transparency. I just wanna understand, um, and I think town council would attest to this, that there are certain situations we have to try to figure out how to handle them, um, given some of the issues, some of the social issues that come before the Board of Health in particular. I cannot speak for the other boards, but I am on the Board of Health. And as Ms. Kinsella, um, alluded to, we've had some really sticky situations, um, some that may could, maybe possibly could have been anticipated, others that definitely could not have been. Um, and so I think it just needs more time. I think that's an article that is, um, very important. And I think it's something we could do, but I think we need a, that's one that I think we need town council input as to how to do it right. Thank you.
Mr. Wells and then Mr. Zol. Oh, you're muted.
I agree. I got, I got my, so I, I agree with Roxanne here. This is definitely, and while I appreciate Mr. Zol's motion, this is definitely one of those times where from the board's perspective, you want to sit and listen and then if we're going to take a vote, take it at the time, as we, as you know, we are always asked to tell me for, or are we actually on the night of, it may even be the night, our meeting on the night of this coming before the agenda night. But I would be, not be inclined to want to vote on this so much, so far ahead. Roxanne's right in this. We should wait, listen, and then take our vote at the appropriate time.
Mr. Mr. Zol, thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. Just my thirty second on this is, I think that the spirit of this article is a hundred percent spot on. I was, someone recently brought it to my attention that the cemetery committee, for example, hasn't posted minutes in quite some time. I think we, we really need, and I understand that, you know, Ms. Musto supports this, a lot of, a lot more transparency in our local government, particularly from the local, from the elected committees. I expect that there will be an amendment to this that will help negotiate around the, the issues of personal privacy. And I look forward to seeing what that looks like. However, I think it's important that the select board stands up for transparency in local government. And I think that this, that's what the spirit of this is. And so I would just encourage us to continue to go ahead and, and, and vote to support this article. Thank you.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I think I agree with Ben in the spirit of things, sure. But we want to make sure that this is done in a manner that we've incorporated as much as we can into. And I think we, we need some input from town council. We need some input from these committees that will be affected. And I mean, I can tell you for the, I sit on the Board of Health. We have everything. Our stuff is all up to date. I can't, again, I can't speak for other committees, but the same could be spoken about some of our subcommittees that have not had minutes for, you know, eons. We're running into those issues. Nick can attest to that. We're running into some of these issues with some of these subcommittees. So again, I think our job is to do something that is transparent, but, but in these cases, I think we have to do it right. I think that we could have this worked on and fine tuned probably for May, for the next town meeting. I, I just think that it's a smarter way to do it, to, to get the input from these affected committees and get the input from town council on this a little bit more. Thank you.
And, and now I could say, I, I've been aware of the, some of the issues that have been brought up by the Board of Health, by the cemetery, by the warrant committee. And seems to me that, that as, as Mr. Zol mentioned, it may be useful to amend it to, to deal with some of the issues that have been, that have arisen. Perhaps we can have the initial proponent of this in on the fourteenth. And we can, perhaps we can have then town council on the fourteenth. I would say, from my point of view, I'd like to, if we, if we want to move forward with this, I, I think we can do it before town meeting. And I think maybe it would be upon us to, to, to propose an amendment. So I'd be more comfortable, I, I would say, I'd be more comfortable deciding where we are in terms of amending this and then going forward with a vote. And perhaps we can do that on the fourteenth. I, I, I'm frankly not quite comfortable voting this until I, until I, until I know what the amendment would be in order to, to kind of tweak it in the way that we're, we're comfortable with. So, so Mr. Zol, you know, I can, I'd just be more comfortable if we can, if we can tee it up and, and get a little bit more information for the fourteenth. But this is a.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. I, I was not aware that we would have the ability to offer an amendment on the fourteenth before town meeting. So if that's the case, I would withdraw my motion and then ask that we reconsider it after maybe amending the language.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can prepare ourselves. I mean, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't go in the warrant necessarily. It wouldn't go in the warrant because the warrant will go to print. But we can prepare an amendment and vote an amendment at any time prior to, prior to town meeting or during town meeting. And then we can bring the amendment forward at town meeting when we propose it. So we'd say this is, and we can have a green sheet, well, not, wouldn't be a green sheet because it's from us, but we could have a sheet out saying, we, we can instruct the, we can, we can provide the moderator with the amendment prior to town meeting so that it can be, they can go before the body. So, so, so we can do that.
I'd appreciate the opportunity to work on that and then we can reduce it on the fourteenth. So I'll withdraw my, my motion and ready to go forward.
Great, great. Anything else on item three? Alright, item four is discussion approval warrant for the December fourth, two thousand twenty-three special town meeting. Mr. Milano, anything on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, we'll incorporate the changes discussed at this meeting into the warrant. And then I would be seeking the board's approval now for us to post the warrant and have it printed for town meeting members and, and everybody else.
Comments or questions from members? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to, oh, I've lost my place. I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for December fourth, two thousand twenty-three special town meeting. Did I say that right? You can amend that if I didn't say that correctly.
Just, just like, and, just to add, and, and request that the constables post the warrant.
Absolutely. So I'll take that.
I'll second.
Alright, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just one point. As soon as we go, because I have an eleven o'clock, I'm going to leave this meeting and transition to my phone. So, just so when you see me disappear from the screen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alright.
I'll take my hand down.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zol?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item five, discussion. And so Richard, you're gonna go to phone now?
I'm gonna change. Yeah.
Item five, and we'll just give Richard a minute to transition. Item five. Soon as he pops up, let's pop him on.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting for Mr. Wells, just a, a quick point. I have a work commitment at eleven, so I'll need to be off both this and the executive session by eleven o'clock.
Yeah, I think, I think, my hope is that the next item will, will move pretty quickly and then, and then we'll go right into executive session. See, see here yet? Okay. Give me just a minute.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Yes, please.
Do we have to switch off to a different Zoom for the executive session? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yes. We should have actually just had Richard do that in the executive session. I could text him.
Mr. Milano?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a quick comment. I, getting into this meeting, this Zoom link, I had to actually go through the main website. It wouldn't go through on the link that was sent. So I don't know what the issue was, but I had to go through the main Town of Milton page to get onto this one. So I'm hoping I'm not gonna have a problem with that next one.
I'll email it out now anyway, just so everybody has it correctly.
Okay, if I have a problem, I'll text you or something. Hopefully I don't have a problem with that one.
Alright, alright, thank you. Item five, discussion approval select board statement regarding Israel. And just to, Richard, just as an update, one thing that came up in the, in the, while you were away is that Mr. Zol has a hard stop at eleven. So, so we've got about twenty-seven minutes.
I do as, I do as well, Mr. Chair, so.
Right, alright, so. So moving along, discussion approval of select board statement regarding Israel. This is Mr. Zol and Mr. Ms. Musto. I believe.
Ms. Is Ms. Musto really that was the author? So I'd like to have her speak to it first.
Okay, thank you. So the statement that I came up with you all have, I believe, in front of you. It speaks to what happened on October seventh. And, you know, it's, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's pretty simple. And I'm just hoping to get some support for that. I sent it to Mr. Zol, who reviewed it as well. Just a couple of points to, just to point out that, that are going on is that, you know, this, this attack on October seventh was a targeted attack against Jewish people simply due to their Jewish identity. And unfortunately, what we're seeing now is a real large uptick in antisemitism throughout the world, not just even in this country. And I know that the Biden administration is taking this antisemitism uptick very seriously. There was a article I just read that was talking about that since the attacks on Israel on October seventh, Hamas attacks, that the number of antisemitic incidences have jumped three hundred and eighty-eight percent. Three hundred and eighty-eight percent. That's huge. And I think that, I also read that on this past Monday, the Vice President of the United States, her husband, Mr. Emhoff, and the Secretary of Education Cardona, they, they met, they denounced antisemitism, all other forms of hate. And they also reaffirmed that the administration's support for Israel and the right for Israel to defend itself against terrorism. So I think that this statement is appropriate and I would look to support from my colleagues on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to thank Ms. Musto for her very thoughtful creation of this statement, which she said I reviewed, but I had no changes to because I thought it was just, just perfectly worded as it is. I don't think that there's anything in this statement that people could object, object to. We have seen and we know the threats that our Jewish neighbors in Milton and, and Jews in the United States and around the world have been subjected to. There've been some truly awful things that have been happening in cities, in towns, in rural areas, on college campuses. And we need to, as a town, stand up and say, we will not just sit tacitly by and watch this wave of antisemitism happen without letting our Jewish neighbors know that we stand in solidarity with them and their right to exist and their right to protect themselves. So I would strongly urge my fellow select board members to vote in favor of the statement.
So can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
I make a motion, a very strong emotion, emotion, emotion. I could be very emotional on this if I have to be. I make a very strong motion to support this letter and to publicize it every way, shape we can. Perhaps we even, I don't know if we'd have the budget to do so, that we take a full page ad next week's Times and publish it, signed by all of us.
At second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Thank you, Ms. Musto. Motion's been made in second. And so, so we can look into it, a full page maybe. I, I don't know how class prohibitive that would be, but we've been looking through it, certainly looking to see if we can do it. Maybe, maybe the publisher of the Times will, will, will go along.
Absolutely. I agree. And I'd be willing to contribute to that, Mr. If I had to, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so, so motion's been made in second. Let me say, let me thank myself, thank Ms. Musto for what I think is a very, very well-put statement and captures, as Mr. Zol mentioned, as well, captures the import of this and captures the reality of this. And, 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 and also does what it needs to do, and that is to, to provide or exclaim support for Israelis and for our neighbors here in Milton. So, so I'm very much in favor of this as well. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zol?
Yes.
And, and myself. Did I, did I forget anyone? No, I got everyone, right? Yes, I did. And Mr. Zulish, yes. Okay. Alright, thank you for that. Alright, item six is executive session. Discussion started with respect to threat and litigation. And I would move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threat and litigation against the town, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. The select board will not return to open session. Do I have second?
Second, second.
She's been made in second. Any further discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zol?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you, everyone. And we will see you again in open session on November fourteenth.